Okay, I'll call commission meeting for December fourteenth, twenty twenty-two to order. And our first item of business will be the pledge of allegiance.
We will ask our retiring clerk to leave us with.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's go ahead and set our agenda. Has there been any cancellations that we need to be aware of?
Uh, no.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we set the agenda for our December fourteenth commission meeting as posted.
Second?
Have a motion and second to set the agenda and set it on favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. All right, our first item of business is Weida, Wes, and Rita Flatton. Come on up and tell us what's going on if you want to talk about.
So this is, we've not done this before.
No, you're okay. I'm Sam Weston.
Sam Weston.
Yeah.
What do you kind of?
Lake town.
Lake town. We're from Garden City.
John, I live at the junction, Sage Creek Junction.
Okay, nice.
I'm Bill Cox.
Hi, Bill.
I live in Woodford, South Bay.
Okay, so our taxes for our, we bought a piece of property in Garden City about nature. And they were about five hundred dollars. And then last, well, this year, um, we had been on a mission that we started in Salt Lake. We were renting a condo. I called and changed, I think it was the garbage bill address. And they changed everything. So we never got the, like, tax notification telling you how much it's gonna be. Well, then when we got the actual taxes, well, I never got taxes. I started thinking I should be paying those and looked it up. And it had jumped.
This is Kim Wilson, our assessor.
Oh, good, hi, Kim.
We start over.
It had jumped over two thousand dollars. I think she knows my story. I think I talked to you or your office. So, um, it said it was point five three two eight percent complete. So my first question is, is how was that point five three two eight computed? How did you derive that it was that much complete?
I don't use stuff like that, point five, I don't use that. I use like fifty percent or twenty-five percent. I have a sheet that I go by that the state puts out that lets me know whether, how complete it is. Like if there's drywall, if there's insulation.
So unfortunately, I should have brought the paperwork, but I, I don't have it. Do you have ours from this year? Cause I specifically wrote down and I've got it in my calendar item, point five three two eight. I don't think I would have made that up.
Five three two eight, I don't, that's.
But anyway, how was, how was it calculated?
What's your parcel number? Cause I don't remember talking to you.
Well, I know I talked to a lot of people in the office.
Wes and Rita.
Might not have been you.
What was that?
Wes and Rita Flatton.
Flatton.
F L A T E N.
Oh, and I, I don't see the parcel number.
Four fifty-seven.
It's the only.
West Persimmon Drive in Garden City.
Okay, that's, that's not ringing a bell, but I'm not saying you didn't talk to somebody.
It's the only F L A T E N, so.
Okay, you should be able to. I can look.
And it's actually, I think, under Flaiton Family Trust.
Okay, let me go and look and see because it's not, it's not ringing a bell to me.
So if you.
And, and I, I'll bring the sheet that shows how I came up with the stuff.
That's primarily what we're here for. Um, because nobody could tell us how it was derived at that amount. And the thing you have to know is, we didn't finish the roof until probably August. So the roof hadn't even been shingled, completed. We started with a contractor, didn't, things went up in cost. We took over, we're trying to salvage it money-wise, if that makes sense. And so, um, we haven't really had a hundred percent time to commit to it until we finished our mission the end of July. Now we've been working on it more full-time. But, like, we didn't even have all the windows, exterior windows and doors. We had house rep on and they had put in the foundation and the contractor did the framing. Yeah, they framed it and put on the roof deck. But the rest of it, it's hard for me to think it was fifty percent complete. You know what I mean?
This is on presumption drive?
Persimmon, P E R S I M M O N.
Hodges, so you go up Hodges Canyon? You know where Hodges Canyon is?
Do you know where Charamoya is?
Is it in Charamoya?
Yes, it's above Charamoya, but you just go up.
So is it in, so is it in their phase two or one?
Long Ridge Phase Two.
Okay.
Yeah.
Said four fifty-seven.
Yeah, west.
Yeah. And I went ahead and paid the taxes because I didn't want to get a late fee. But I would like to know, you know, if that's correct, if it's calculated correctly. And if not, I'd like some kind of, I should say, I, we would like some kind of adjustment. That's why we're here.
Okay, I'd also like to see your tax notice. You didn't bring that with you, did you?
I didn't have it, cause.
I'm just gonna see if the treasurer would mind pulling that.
We were living in an RV on the property and then now we're living in our daughter's Airbnb. So we still have a house in Far West. I know, our lives sound kind of. It's like our heads are spinning the last year and a half. But, um, anyway, yeah, all of that is in a file back in Far West and.
And just for the record, you said four fifty-seven West Persimmon Drive?
Yes.
Garden City, right.
Well, I'm positive we can come up with an answer. Once we get the, once we get the stuff in front of us.
Wonderful.
It may not make anybody happy, but we'll have an answer, we'll know.
Well, at least we'll understand, right?
Yeah.
Because, and if it's wrong, then we'll all know it's incorrect and it can be corrected.
Yes.
Cause it jumped from the year before, right?
No, business was.
It's like how much the year before?
Maybe while we're waiting. So we understand you get a forty percent discount if you're a resident, right? Well, our home, we don't have occupancy, obviously, and probably won't for a while. But we are living here most of the time. We do go back to see family across the hill.
Ninety percent of the time or more.
We're here. We spent three weeks, went home for three days. And now we've been here, will be, have been here for four weeks and we're gonna go home for Christmas. So I wanna know, does that qualify us for residency? Can I apply for that now or do I have to have occupancy?
We have a post office.
A certificate of occupancy for the house first.
You just have to spend, what, fifty-one percent of your time here?
In the county. It doesn't have to be at a certain location. Wonderful, we will apply.
As long as you don't have a primary residence somewhere else and you're not registered to vote somewhere else.
We do.
Yeah.
But we're changing, like, we moved our church records this week. We, um, we're having things mailed here. We're finding it's interesting to live here.
Yeah.
Um, a lot of places won't take the P O box, but we're finding if we put a street address, it still gets in the box.
Yeah, you take your primary residence down there often and put it up here.
Okay. And so we need to do that in the voting district to make it official? We could do that.
You just do it with the county, yeah, because, because right now you'd be getting that exemption.
Oh, there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You could get some sort of exemption where you currently live.
Okay.
And so retroactively going back and giving an exemption on taxes probably isn't gonna be an option.
We don't want it retroactive. We weren't living here full-time until August. So, you know, we're good with that.
As far as the taxes going up, you're not the first one that's, that's noticed that and they're based on the home values. And when Bill brings that in, but the values of everyone around you. And, and no doubt, uh, you know, Garden City and, and Bridge County in general's values of properties have skyrocketed.
Yeah, and that's fair too, but our house.
But you need to have doors, windows.
Fifty-three percent complete, like, I don't think so.
And Kim's very good, she'll help us figure this out.
Yeah, that sounds good.
I think they were, maybe they were basing it on the fact that in normal situation, because your permit is for eighteen months.
You would think we would be done.
That you would be this far in that amount of time, which isn't the case. Had to get an extension on the permit past the eighteen. Because we weren't gonna get it done and we might even be paralyzed.
Yes.
Cause we may not even get that done.
So I have it on at fifty percent.
So there's no shingles on the roof?
Okay.
Yeah.
Not, not all the. This is what I go by.
There's no front door.
Right?
There's, if you go around the front side.
There's no doors.
There's no doors.
Okay.
And there's windows.
This is what I go by, rough.
So at fifty percent, I've gone with rough, you know. We didn't have any plumbing at all done?
No roofed at all?
Nope.
Nope.
And the HVAC was not done.
Okay, so what percentage do you think was complete? Because according to, cause I had it on.
Rough labor was done.
So thirty percent?
So somewhere between thirty and fifty. So if these are the exact percents, then thirty.
Thirty percent? Okay, cause that's, that's what I go by. That's what the state puts out, that lets, you know, kinda is my guide.
It's probably based on a schedule, you know, if you have an eighteen month permit.
I don't use anything like that. I look at it. I look at it and then like I said, what I, I mean, I kinda see what's there and try to figure out, you know.
Obviously, things haven't happened according to what you would normally want and plan if you were working with contractors. But, um, we put the house wrap on and we put this, what is this stuff called?
I don't know, it's on the roof.
The shingles?
Vapor barrier.
Thank you. We put all that on before the winter last year because we knew we weren't gonna be able to work on it.
It held up pretty good.
So, yeah, we're gonna have to redo some of the house wrap even. But at least it protected our wood. You know what I mean?
Okay, so you called my office on eleven-two and you talked to Jeannie in my office?
Thank you.
So that's when you called. So I have a question. Why did you not call sooner when you got the valuation notice or anything like that?
You know, we, we did not get the valuation notice. It was sent to our condo that we rented for a mission that ended in July. There's no way, I, I don't think I would have asked for that to be changed. But what I found out in talking to the office was that sometimes when you call to get your garbage or your water bill changed, different address, they change everything, which is kind of cool in most instances.
Yeah, that's, that's probably what happened.
It just didn't work out for us. So the only time I found out is I'm starting to pay all of our house taxes. I have a budget, so it's that time of year and I'm looking at the house taxes. I'm like, I don't have it. And then I tried to log in and the only way I knew how to log in was that guest login, which apparently you're limited to five lookups per person ever, and then you have to pay. So then I couldn't find on the website how to find out how much our taxes were. I actually had to call and talk to a few people to find that out. Then I was able to find out and get the report and save the report.
Okay, so you didn't get a tax notice either?
Never, no, because it went to two oh seventy six hundred south in Salt Lake City, which we let that condo go the end of February, so.
The, yeah, it was, well, the, we didn't know it was on electricity, heat and the bill went like, phew, so we're done.
Been a year and a half.
Yeah, the cost.
Memorable year.
They don't forward your mail to you and like that, huh?
Well, we, we probably, I don't know. I don't know if I did a forwarding order or not because we had had some trouble with them delivering mail in Salt Lake.
We had a real bad.
And I sort of quit sending stuff down there.
We didn't, we weren't even getting stuff that we were supposed to get. We complained to the post-offs down there and the guy would just send it back without even talking to us. He, we got packages sent back, all kinds of stuff.
We were in a, like, a locked condo, so you have to have the key.
With the post-off.
The code or whatever to get in or a key card. And apparently some of the deliverers, mail carriers just didn't handle that very well. But we weren't there anyway. And I don't, I can't for sure tell you that I didn't ask for everything to be changed, but I don't think I would have because I would be looking forward saying, we're not even gonna be there no matter what when taxes come.
I wouldn't know that.
You know what I mean?
I, I wouldn't know that.
But it doesn't matter because we never received it. So there's no way we could have petitioned or we would have petitioned sooner.
Cause that, that's my question is why did you wait so long to get all the list?
That was a good question.
Cause we, you know, we send out stuff.
Right.
Definitely in July and then again in, when the tax notice.
And I understand it's our responsibility. Maybe I should be looking for that, what is it called?
Evaluation notice.
That.
Comes out in July.
So what's our first step in changing her home, where, where she lives to up here?
Well, we sent a declaration and I don't know if we've got it back yet, cause I haven't got them all in the file yet.
I, I, is that the paperwork to say we're residents?
Yep. Cause that was sent to you on the.
We haven't completed that. Um, we weren't sure we could do that because our home doesn't have occupancy yet. So we haven't got a certificate of occupancy.
Okay.
But we are spending most of our time here. I just discussed with them and they said, all you have to do is spend fifty-one percent or more here, which we are doing.
Eighty-three consecutive days is what it is, so.
Consecutive?
Yeah.
So nobody can go on a vacation?
You can, but it's gotta be, I mean, for the most part, you're there.
And you don't have to be in the same exact house, right? Just in the county.
No, you have to be in that house if that's where you're, if, for what we look at.
We don't have a primary house.
Your primary house, so like if, wherever you're living full-time, that's where you're, you know, that's where you come and go from. Like if, when I go home at night, that's where I go. I mean, I can be gone sometimes, but I'm there more than on eighty-three days.
Let me explain what we're doing. We, we're staying in an RV right on the property. But it's too cold. We don't have a, like, winter blizzard RVs. We had to weatherize it and we're staying in our daughter's Airbnb. So.
Which is less than.
I don't know.
A mile and a half away from Far.
Okay, so this address at Far West, you don't have that anymore?
We still have that.
Oh, you still have that?
We're there maybe two days a month.
Okay, I'm guessing that's probably getting the primary exemption at this point?
That's, yeah, that's what they told us, so.
So in order to have it up here, you would need to get something from them saying you've changed it down there to secondary. Cause see, our county is unique because we're primarily second home recreation homes.
Right.
You know, we're like eighty percent to twenty percent primary homes. Big difference.
Yeah, we plan on living here.
Okay.
We've moved our church records. I have a P O box set up. We've been getting mail here.
Okay, the only problem I have is, like I said, I don't have a declaration back for you claiming that this is yours.
Well, can I do that when?
And that you're already getting the exemption somewhere else.
Can I do that when we're living?
Um, if it's gonna be.
Here, there, everywhere.
Um, if it's gonna be primary, yes, you can.
Okay.
But the problem is you're getting the exemption in Far West. So if I call down there, they're gonna say you're getting the exemption. Married couples can only have one unless you have court approved.
I don't want the exemption this year. Maybe that won't help.
So we could do that, but you've gotta send that declaration back.
I want it for next year and I I have the form. It was emailed.
Yep, so we need that back and then you'll have to get something from Far West.
And I'll send that in. Yeah.
Because in their county, most of their properties are gonna be primary residences. So you're gonna have to get that changed and get me proof that they've changed it down there for twenty twenty-three. And then we, that would not be a problem for for us for twenty twenty-three.
I wish.
As long as I have all the, all the pieces of the puzzle. Does that make sense?
Okay.
Cuz you can't be get, the only way you can get more more than one primary residence is if you're renting a property out. To someone that is using it as their primary residence is based on the use of the property. But just because something's under construction doesn't mean you can't get the primary exemption on it as long as you're, everything else is in place. Does that make sense?
And I can file for that.
File for it, right?
Into the year, right? But I can file for it now.
Right now. But the problem is, is you have to also file down there that you're, it's gonna be a secondary residence.
Right. And I can do that.
And then I need a copy of or proof from them saying that it's.
Once again, we don't want primary here for twenty twenty-two. Is that what we're paying?
Okay, but you can get that set up for next year for twenty twenty-three.
And twenty twenty-three will do that.
And then they can tell, then all they need to do is send me something saying you are down there in that, at this property. You are secondary for twenty twenty-three.
And then for twenty twenty-two, can you correct that? So how do we correct?
What do you want us to correct? The amount, the the percentage, the percentage?
From the fifty?
Oh, fifty percent. That would be up to these gentlemen. I cannot at this point because it becomes an abatement of taxes. Because the Board of Equalization has been closed and tax notices have gone out. So you're so late in the year that it becomes an abatement of taxes at that point and that's up to these gentlemen here.
Okay.
I mean, that's no problem to to do a new printout and get you a new uh percentage from thirty, from the fifty to the thirty. That that's not.
Could you do that and tell us how much it would be?
I can do it right now if you want me to.
Please.
You guys good with that?
Yeah. Let's see what it is.
Did you wanna say anything?
No.
Well, thank you for paying your taxes at that, at that rate, you know, and then.
Oh, for sure. I didn't wanna be late.
Asking for a refund, that's different than just not paying.
Yeah. I didn't wanna add interest and penalty on top of the rest, so. We appreciate you guys hearing us.
She worked with taxes, so she understands, right?
Well, I understand.
She worked for treasury.
Income taxes, but not property taxes. Yeah.
Treasury for years. So she understands that, you know, it's better to pay your taxes and fix it later than than the, you know.
Yeah, easier to give refund than.
The government or whoever it is.
Yeah, and a lot of those property taxes you're paying, the county actually doesn't keep, you know.
Right, they go to the state, to the school and to the.
The state, the school board, yeah, most of it.
Most goes to the school, right? Yeah. I was surprised when I learned that. Huge amount. So eighty eighty percent are secondary?
Yeah.
That's incredible. Wow.
The only other county that's higher than us, just barely, is Daggett County over by um Plamen Gorge.
Oh, of course.
But they have uh less than a thousand homes and we're we're closer to four thousand.
Okay. We were grateful to find a lot that had city sewer services, you know, all the services.
Paved roads.
Paved roads.
Persimmons is a nice spot. Look, nice houses going up there.
Yeah.
So is that Hanson, Hanson's.
Yes, Ken.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And Randall, uh, what's his name?
Hanson.
Hanson, Hanson. He he's working the roads a lot and I think he was on the thing as the.
The developer.
Developer. But Ken is who.
His son is our bishop in Far West, well, he was till we moved our records.
Zach, Hanson.
Really?
Yeah, Zach is small world.
Zach's the bishop now, yeah. I don't know if you know Zach.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we do.
Cool.
Yeah.
And Marcy is his wife. They live like around the corner from us, just five houses, I think, away.
Oh, yeah, Marcy's in here in town.
Yeah. Yeah.
Really nice people.
Anyway.
He's the bishop now, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah.
He's a good kid.
He is.
He was pretty scared about it. He's gonna do a good job.
He'll do a great job, yeah.
So we'll see how she comes out, but that'll lower your taxes to one thousand seven hundred eighty-seven dollars and twenty-nine cents at thirty percent.
Okay.
That's, that's not official. That's.
That's an estimate.
No code even.
That's plus or minus five hundred dollars.
Well.
So what did they pay? What was the fifty percent?
Two thousand something.
Two thousand, twenty-three hundred and eighty-three at at the at the second uh secondary residence, right?
That's a pretty good cut, huh?
Yeah. It's worth spending the morning, especially since we're trying to salvage our project. It's incredible what the cost of housing is. What it's done over the last five years.
Mm-hmm.
Scary, huh?
Yep.
You wonder where your kids are even gonna be able to buy a place and stay, you know?
Well, even food, like eggs have more than doubled in the last year and.
And they say they're gonna go up again. I'm thinking about getting some chickens.
Yeah.
We bought some yesterday. They said eggs are gonna up a dollar tomorrow, so.
Yeah, they've been going up worse than anything.
You don't realize how much you use them too until you start spending them on.
Yeah.
I'm cutting back on my eggs. I went from five to four to two. I'll get down to one egg a day, maybe.
So your commissioners?
Right.
Are there just three?
Just three, just like Weaver County.
Well, I don't, I wouldn't even know. Thank goodness, I've never had to do this.
Scott Jenkins is one of your commissioners and uh Gates Bloor is a commissioner.
Oh, yeah, his name's on signs everywhere.
He, he's a commissioner. He was a s- a state representative for a few years, two at the fourth, well, yeah, six years.
Okay.
Scott.
And then Scott was a state senator. Scott Jenkins was a state senator and then he's a commissioner. And then you've got um Jim.
Harvey.
Harvey. James Harvey is the other three.
It's not our Harvey and our Ward?
Probably.
Old Ward is.
Probably.
From Far West?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, really? I had no idea. Did you?
Jim and.
You learn something new every day.
Trying to think where his wife is. I wanna say, I wanna say Jane.
You know him very well.
Um.
He's a funny guy.
Not real, but you know, from church and his wife was our relief society president for a little while. Is it Jim?
Maybe it's not the same one.
Oh, no, that's not him. Nope. Far West, believe it or not, has exploded.
Yep.
I lived there as a little girl. There was one ward.
Everything else. Used to ride your horses across to where they have houses now, across the beet fields.
We live in it. Well, our home is in a subdivision.
Harvey, Harley, Harley Beet Farm, got one to go start.
Like eight hundred and some odd houses.
Yeah, well, there used to be cows grazing and sheep grazing where your house is and deer and moose.
That was a farm.
Did you know the Har- or did you know them?
Ken Hanson?
Joan and.
Who?
The Higglies.
Oh, he said up here. He said up here.
No, I. I'm I'm talking about where your new house is.
Oh, he's talking about.
Oh, up there. Yeah, there still are deer grazing, which is kinda fun. But we ha- yeah, we have it.
Yeah.
And we have a badger.
What do you know about badgers? Well, we've talked about that. And not when, we don't hardly ever see it, but we know it's.
But we didn't get a picture of it.
I think it's set is below our property, but it's still.
There's a hole down there.
They can make a nest.
Okay.
They can out squirrel. We all have holes everywhere. And they'll come out in the winter. They can squirrel fly and stuff, so you can get them any time.
Okay, so if I take it to the thirty percent, then it comes out with a value for the house of one fifty-six, one thirty-six. If I add that to the value of the land of a hundred and thirty-five thousand, that's a total of two ninety-one, one thirty-six. So then that would be a tax amount difference of five fifty-four sixty.
Oh, good job. I think you had it almost right on the button.
So, and that's figuring it with the the two different tax rates. That's assuming. Was your taxes twenty-one oh five seventy-seven?
No, twenty-three eighty-three.
Twenty-eight, twenty-three eighty-three oh seven.
I told you it was point five three two.
Maybe plus the land?
But the point five three two eight is the tax rate.
That's that's the tax rate.
That's the tax rate that you're paying on in your tax district.
So this is, this is.
I looked at the wrong thing.
This is what they had.
So, cuz there's the five three two eight right there.
Oh, got it. I guess I didn't realize that it was, I thought that was the percentage.
Oh, cuz we had to factor. That's why. So the difference would be a little higher than that then? Because that that would, that would not include a factor. But we factored that for.
Right.
For the sales ratio study. I did not include that. So.
I come up with five ninety-five seventy-eight.
That's probably pretty close.
So.
Based on on.
Yeah, do you wanna run it? Do you wanna run it again with the tax allow you on here, so you're?
We know exact, yes. Do you want me to see it?
Just just go run it again, so we know what we're refunding.
Exactly how much.
Okay. Thanks for your patience.
So the squirrels, we have squirrels, a lot of squirrels. What do you do for those?
Let the bad, let the badgers eat them. That's why, that's why the badgers dig big holes is cuz they're chasing squirrels.
Cuz they're chasing a squirrel.
They're getting squirrels out.
We have mice and I think we've, we're over the hump of the mice fight.
Yeah, cuz we're out living in the trailer.
Well, true.
So much cuz it freezes up.
You gotta be grandkids.
Yeah.
Get them a little tiny twenty-two or a big pellet gun.
They're in city limits. You can't shoot a gun in city limits.
Pellet gun.
We gotta herd them just past the limit, herd them out of there.
I've never seen it. I'm not even sure I would see it to shoot it. My brother saw it twice.
We get a young, one of their youngest grandkids to shoot them with a BB gun. I don't think they would have.
You'd think Samantha would let her kids shoot.
I don't think they would handcuff a kid.
She will let them touch a gun, not even a Nerf gun. So hmm. We do have older kids, but I I think if I saw it, I might take the risk and shoot it. And I guess there's always trapping, but it sounds online like that's quite the rigmarole.
They rip the cage to pieces. They're vicious. They are vicious.
He used to have a pet badger.
He is.
Really? Was it nice?
You'd have to get it from, it was a baby.
It was, it was a kitten. Yeah, it was a, it was a kitten and uh.
Document.
They eat meat. So he just beat him meat. He wasn't, I don't know, the older he got, the more aggressive, aggressive he got, yeah. Was that a house pet? Heavens, yes. Slept with it every night. No. No, it was not a house pet.
Yeah, we don't see much moose around. We used to see a lot of moose through um, where it's the, chew on the trees, but I don't see any moose down there.
We wondered if the moose died.
There's, there's a few moose. They're still coming down. They're coming down right through Buttercup and right on down to Lake and getting a drink down in there, yeah.
Oh, okay. Used to see him over just south on snow, was it snow or uh?
Snow meadows.
Snow meadows, yeah.
There was one that come down through there a lot, but I don't even see him.
Haven't seen him in a year and a half. Doesn't mean it's not there, I guess.
A wild turkey.
So do trees grow pretty well in that soil or?
Yeah. Why aren't there any trees up here? It looks up in the city. Just down the middle between here and the lake, there's like bear, just age birds. Is it the ground quality or lack of water or?
Probably both. One of the ones that uh, they call them a cedar tree or a pinion juniper tree. They uh, they do really well in the air and um but. The biggest places you're gonna see the forest is high enough that um there's water and it stays longer through the year because of the snow melt.
Oh, so. Makes sense.
So they're either along a water source, a river, a stream or something of that effect, or in the cities, they were all planted, of course, by the pioneers. Um, the majority of them in both these smaller communities were cottonwoods. They come over within, over, they they brought those seedlings over from England with them. And planted them in the cities.
Sorry to take up so much of your time.
All right, we'll get this straightened out for you. Just wanna make sure her figures jibe so that we know what we're doing, so.
So you meet once a month?
Unless we have to meet other times occasionally. Our regular money meeting is the first Wednesday of the month. Um, but this is our budget hearing where we approve our county budget for twenty twenty-three and so we've moved it to the second Wednesday of this month, so.
Budget?
Yeah.
Done here.
Yeah.
And we'll have to reduce that budget because we're gonna give you five hundred dollars.
Because you're losing taxes. I was waiting for that.
We'll pull it from the senior citizens center.
There you go.
Making us feel bad. We have to make a donation over there. Thirty-five minutes.
Thirty-five minutes into the day or.
I don't feel guilty cuz they have eighty percent of people paying forty percent more or sixty percent, no, forty percent more in taxes.
The sad part about that is that eighty percent generates three times the amount of garbage that the one there, the twenty percent does.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah.
Cuz everybody comes and, you know.
Wow, yeah. I hear a lot of ambulances.
We transport ten to twelve second home residents or visitors to one, one primary residence.
Oh, my gosh. Well, I guess that ratio stands to reason if it's eighty to twenty. This is gonna sound terrible, but for a while I thought, well, it's cuz all the people over here are old, so we're all. But we went to church and there was tons of little kids running around, young families and.
So you'd be in the second ward.
Yes. Yeah, we went the last two weeks, really enjoyed it.
They said, we must've gone to the Tamarack before Christmas for me with uh, all the way to Salt Lake and it says, oh, in Paris. Oh, okay.
So the total would be six sixty-five fifty-two would be the difference. So.
I'm sorry, is that four?
Um, six sixty-five fifty-two. So the total value would then be one eighty-seven, three sixty-three plus the one thirty-five for the land.
So the difference between what they paid?
The twenty-three eighty-three oh seven.
Yeah.
And the seventeen, the the total now would be seventeen seventeen fifty-five. Difference is six sixty-five fifty-two.
Okay.
Do you wanna make a motion to?
Yeah.
Mister Chairman, I'd make a motion that we, on the recommendation of our assessor. Uh, with the thirty percent and the fifty percent, uh, make a refund to Wes and Rita Flaton for that. Make that change in the taxes.
For, go ahead.
The amount she said.
Six sixty-five fifty-two.
Second that.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to uh do a refund of six hundred sixty-five dollars. Okay, we have a motion on the table to, uh, do a refund of six hundred sixty-five dollars and fifty-two cents. Um, for the completion of their, the percentage completion of the second home, how in favor say aye?
Aye.
That was opposed. Is that right, six sixty-five?
Yeah, six sixty-five point five two.
Okay.
That vote is no, cause we had someone participate.
Thanks, you guys.
Okay.
So appreciated.
Six sixty-five point five two, six sixty-five.
Thank you.
Hopefully we'll see you around.
Yeah, welcome to the community.
So then I will talk to Lou Jean about making that change and doing the refund.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Yes, please, Dwayne.
I think I have new knee, I have three of them.
I'll give you my new and give me my open back.
Is it working okay?
Huh?
You working okay?
Yeah, but it's just still, got to get broke in.
It takes time.
Yeah.
Anyway, it's good to get a, get a new one if you need it, I've got three of them.
State who you are and what you're here for with our.
Okay, it's, uh.
McKay Willis.
Dwayne Robinson.
Lake Town Cemetery.
Okay. Tell us what you've got on your mind, Dwayne, and, and okay?
All in my mind is that we've added a, a new person to our committee, Craig Lamborn, he's gonna be our new treasurer. So, Tammy will be, eventually be released in that, that position.
Okay, so is that, um, where you have that, that is a board member's position, correct, as a treasurer?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, does she do, um, does she do the secretarial work along with being treasurer or just the secretary, or just treasurer?
Well, everything to do with.
Both.
Well, secretary and finance.
So it's secretary treasurer basically is her title as well as a board member, okay, great.
He's very good, he does not live in Lake Town, but he does live within the cemetery district along the lakeshore there. We know Craig, yeah. We fell into a really good one there.
Good.
Tammy been wanting off for quite a while.
Two years.
Well, all he's got to do is live within the district and you're in good shape, so.
Yeah, that's what's always required. Well, other than that, this, I guess we had two new ones last year, they worked out pretty good, they're still learning the trick of the trade, but, uh, eventually, I guess, just dig my own hole when they fall in it.
Oh, they probably will can help you with that if you need to, I don't think you gotta dig your own grave, okay? We, we, we've done that our whole lives, is dig our own graves, so.
Well, anyway, yeah, we're looking for some more help, we're getting, well, I've been there since nineteen eighty-four.
Do you want me to up this in the motion?
Yep.
I'd make a motion that we, by the recommendation of the Lake Town City Cemetery District, uh, put Craig Lamborn on as secretary treasurer, beginning January first, two thousand twenty-three.
Second. I have a motion and a second, uh, to appoint Craig Lamborn as a board member slash secretary treasurer for the Lake Town Cemetery District, home favor say aye?
Aye.
That was opposed, okay, motion passes unanimously.
I'd recommend to him to get their past secretary treasurer, uh, something for her service.
How, how soon do we have to, uh, delete her, because as an advisor, she's been there for a thousand years.
No time limit.
Well, if, if he's replacing her, you can keep her on as long as she'll help you.
As a board member.
But she wouldn't be a voting board member unless you're down a board member.
Okay, well, yeah.
So will, will Craig complete your board? Will you be down a board member?
Well, we're supposed to have five, right?
Well, when, when Tammy is off, yes, we will need it.
Yeah, we'll need another one.
Okay, so.
Unless she's, unless we keep her on this as a member.
Well.
Board member.
Yeah, I mean, you can do that, we, we just appointed you a board member and a secretary and treasurer. That doesn't mean that secretary and treasurer does not, that's something the board decides more than literally we. We appoint the board and then you guys decide secretary and treasurer, so if, if she wants to remain and just kinda do a smooth transition, that's great. But either one of them can vote now, so, um, uh, if, if he was, if he, if you weren't down one, in other words, if, if you were still, you know, appointing him would give you six, then she would be off. But where we've appointed him, that's only five, and you, she can continue until as far as, and, you know, I don't know what her term is, how many, you know, I don't know where you guys are at on your terms, but their four-year terms and have to be reappointed or a new one appointed after four years, so she would probably.
So do we keep track of that, or do you keep track?
You guys do.
Of when they need to be reappointed and we come here for that process?
Right.
Well, I wonder if we had better be reappointed then, it's been a while.
So why don't you get with Tammy, would she would probably have a record of that in minutes of some kind of when your terms were, and, uh, why don't you come back maybe in January? And we can see whose terms have expired and you need to be reappointed, and that will give you a better understanding of that. We kind of try to keep track of that, but, um, with the special service district, they need to keep track and my, to make sure that their board members are all in, in their terms.
What's the term limit supposed to be?
Four years, four years. And we try to keep them staggered, you know, so you're not all going off at once if you happen to want some changes or whatever, so. But that's, that's kinda where that. Check with, check with, check with her and see if she's got some kind of a record or minutes or something. If not, then get back with us and we can probably go back in our minutes and find out when we reappointed you. But it'd be better if you guys had a record as well, so. If you wouldn't mind checking on that.
We'll get it.
We're getting better and, uh, seems to be going pretty good with the, you know, the new people. We're gonna get this stuff on electronically to make sure we don't lose anything, so it's gonna be good. If you could just get us a GPS where we can pinpoint where the headstone goes. That's our big request. Ponder it. I don't know whether there is such a thing, but it would be nice, just push a button and dig right here.
At least we've got the head, three hundred foot tapes.
There's nothing worse than to be digging along and.
Are you keeping that piece of paper?
Nope. I don't think so.
You don't need it?
I don't think so. We'll give it to the clerk.
No, give it to the clerk.
The first, the first time I, first time I give something away, she'll be all over me, so we'll give that to her.
Okay, all right, we go home.
Well, thank you.
Okay, drive safe.
Appreciate your work.
Let us, let us know what we need to do so we can get you all current.
I would trust you guys' minds more than the GPS telling me we're big.
Well, we do, we do pretty good, but it's awful tough.
When it's covered with snow like this, that's, that's the time that.
It was a miracle, my little brain kicked in, I said, wow, there's gotta be a headstone there, we gotta be careful. Just as the blade was right there. I was with you.
Well, we can, we can handle it.
Yeah, you can, all right, gentlemen, thank you.
Okay, we'll chat with you later, thank you, good time.
All right, thank you.
Why not Mitch?
Mitch Polesom, planning administrator and economic development advisory board administrator. Do you want to talk about the, uh, the bike path grant first? I've asked Chris Chestnut to be on the YouTube link, so if you guys have any questions about U dot interactions, he's there and can, uh, can address those.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, last meeting, we talked about, um, a state aid agreement, uh, for, to run the bike path from its existing location at Gus Rich Point down to Rondavee Beach, or really however far that we're able to get that. Uh, there was concern over the amount of match that we had to come up with, which is six hundred and forty thousand dollars. So I did a little bit of jousting around and just put some, some ideas on paper of where, where this might come up with, and these are not hard and fast, right, these are just, this is a potential, uh, potential option. The first one that was mentioned was, well, maybe Rich County could come up with a hundred thousand dollars, uh, in kind, right? A donation of equipment and time and manpower and stuff like that, and that's flexible, that's, you know, whatever, whatever works. I also contacted the Utah Outdoor Recreation Grant, and they have, um, a grant, uh, it's called Tier Two Funding, and it's for projects that are two million dollars and over, and they will award between two hundred and six hundred thousand dollars in cash. Uh, that grant, uh, shows up in the springtime, I think it's between February and March. Uh, the gal that I was talking to was really interested in who would be applying, and the grant administrators can't, you know, they're not the ones that are, that are saying yea or nay, but, um, you know, she said that the board would likely look very highly on this because we already have so much money built up, we've got a really great project that we started working on, it's got good public potential. Um, and, uh, and it's coming from Rich County, um, they really like to see small communities, small counties, small rural counties, um, applying for and being proactive about these, uh, recreation grants, so I thought that was really.
Hey Mitch, which board hands out that money?
Um, it just comes from the, uh, it's the governor's office about recreation, and so I don't, they've got a governing board that distributes the money.
Okay, I was just put on the, um, Outdoor Adventure Commission, which I think has like Terrim Key, which is who you probably talk to, and the heads of, like, the DNR and things like that.
Okay.
And Office of Tourism, the key is on there.
Yep, I think that could very well be the board, so see, there you go, we've got the money in the bag already.
But, but that's the first thing they talked to me about, is, my first meeting is next week, but they, they said they need these rural counties to apply for this money.
Right. Um, let's see, so let's see, I also talked with Tammy, uh, she indicated there might be some, you know, some additional money from TRT that we could apply for. Uh, did not give me an indicator of how much that was, so I just threw down two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we also have seventy thousand dollars from the TRT to go to the, toward the summit, the trail up there, and that's already been approved, and I don't think it'd take a lot, um, to get that reallocated, and then we also have Utah Office of Recreation, a seventy thousand dollar grant from them as well, and that would take a little bit of effort to get that moved, that's a possibility, but that's when, as I was asking, um, this gal about this question, uh, she's like, I have a better solution for you, and that would be to go after these tier-two funds, um, so.
So the application in the spring is when?
Uh, I believe, I believe it's between February and March.
Okay, and, um, at that point in time, have we gotta have a total amount of the project and what the project is?
So, ready.
So we're, you know, what we've estimated, I mean, I guess we're gonna have to have some pretty solid numbers.
Right.
Um, to be asking for match dollars.
Correct.
Okay.
I just, I just, uh, looked it up and they do administer the UR, that commission that I just got put on.
Cool, that's awesome.
Okay, so, um, in discussion with, uh, with U dot, and, uh, I think Chris Chestnut was on the phone call as well, um, we're still kind of up in the air as to whether this is gonna be a U dot project or it's gonna be a county project. So one of the things about it is, is to U dot right away. So there's probably gonna have to be some decisions about right aways and those kinda things, um, and, uh, whether we just have U dot be the lead with their engineers and do the, do the, the project as a U dot project with us providing cash matching to the project, um, or we completely take the project over and hire our own engineers and do our own construction, uh, RFPs and those kinda things, and U dot would be on the sideline. Um, it is a U dot right away.
Right.
And it's, they've got as much in, or more into this game than we do, cause it's their right away and what are they gonna allow for that, so.
You're good at this stuff, what is your preference?
My suggestion is if U dot would take it, that we go ahead and let U dot take the, take the lead on it.
Sure, less for us to deal with.
Well, we're gonna have to deal with U dot anyway, they'd just as well be driving it as us going back to them every time and saying, mother may I, can we do this?
Right, can we do this, right.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, cause no matter wha, how we do it, we've still gotta do it to their standards within their right away, and so, um, I, I, I don't know, that decision's gotta be made, I mean, I, I think we can go either way, but in talking to Rob Wright, um, last week, he was going to check with, um, and see, one of the problems would be is if they can come up with a, uh, a program manager, a PM, and, uh, whether there'd be one available for that, so.
So it seems to me that if we let, uh, Department of Transportation do it, take it over, then the money, the two and a half million dollars wouldn't come through Rich County's coffers, uh, we wouldn't be keeping track of that, we would just make sure that we had the matching money lined up.
Correct.
Uh, which, which really simplifies the, the bill paying.
Correct.
We wouldn't have to go out and get a consultant, wouldn't have to worry about the construction issues maybe that we, we dealt with on the last round. So could, could simplify Rich County's life quite a bit.
Well, that's kinda what I'm thinking, um, I mean, because it is in our, their right way, I mean, it's not really, uh, I mean, it's something we support wholly, but, and we'll put, you know, gather the match money for it, but it is their right away and, and it, it's gonna have to deal with their, their regulations, so.
Well, and if, if it was done right, they would put my, a bunch of money and slide the road west. And they would need to be in the driver's seat to do all that anyway.
You bet.
Um, yeah, I mean, that's certainly the way, that's, that, that's the way, that's certainly the best way to do it, and it'll probably end up that way. But if we wanna wait ten to twelve years, that's kinda where we're at, because of the amount of, so this wouldn't be a priority project for them, they've already got a list of their priority projects that are programmed out seven to nine years. So the money wouldn't be, they would, they couldn't even appropriate money to that until some of these other projects come off their vest, so.
So does having U dot, from your experience, Bill, if they took lead, would that's, would that's, what does it do to the timeline of us getting this bike path done?
Um, it wouldn't, it wouldn't really matter, I don't think it would affect much with the timeline, because everything that we do, um, would be, everything U dot does is gonna be basically, we're gonna, they're gonna have to give us the approval of everything we do.
It's gonna be done by them anyway.
And they're gonna be doing it anyway, so I don't think really it's gonna slow the project down by having them the, the lead on it.
So we probably still get it done in a year or two?
I, yeah, we got two years to use that money, so. I, you know, and it, and it hasn't been decided, they were gonna do some checking and see, um, they're, they're shorthanded, you know, and we might, you know, in order to get the time, the project done in a timely manner, we may have to, we may have to move forward as, as the, as the project, um, the project manager, we may have to do that, and, you know, and we can certainly do that. That's not an issue, but it's a pretty big undertaking, you know, that.
Indeed.
You know, so.
That's probably the trickiest part of all the bike path, right along that, this side, I would say. My priority is just to get it done, you know?
True.
So I'm, I'm happy either way.
So that's kinda where we're at, we need to pursue, pursue every, every opportunity we got on this.
Okay, so you want me to go after the tier-two, tier-two funding then?
You do, but the problem is, is we've gotta give you some information of number one, how far we're gonna go. Number two, is the three point two million gonna do it? And number three, what the timeline is gonna be, because if we can't break ground this next year on doing something, they may basically say, come back in a year. So we got a couple of months, I think, that's why I'm wondering about when the application is, is to get some of this stuff, you know, massaged out to see, number one, if U dot's gonna do it, number two, um, what it's gonna be, the environmental's gonna be a real. um, what it's gonna be. The environmental is gonna be a really difficult thing on this because of the fact that we're gonna have to deal with the core on literally about a mile and a half of road there particularly. That's gonna be really sensitive that we may have to come up with mitigation on and a bunch of different things. So, um, this is gonna be a difficult project. It just really is. If there was plenty of room between the high water mark and the edge of the highway, so we could just put it in, it would be great, but. So it's a complicated project.
Sure.
And I, I don't know. I, you know, it's just one of those things we'll just have to wade into and see.
All right.
How deep the water is.
Right. Do you wanna sign the state aid and we can at least get that, uh, that part moving? Look for funding and start, uh, nailing down some of these other particulars.
Yeah. Yeah, we can do that.
Any motion for that?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we have our chairman sign the state aid for this, um, for the bike path funding through UDOT.
Yeah.
Second.
A motion and a second. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Is your DOT guy on?
Yes. Our DOT got, is our DOT guy is on, right?
There's people watching. I don't know who it is.
Yeah, it's Chris Chestnut.
Well, hopefully one of them is. Chris, do you have any comments? Do you wanna just put it in the chat? You can't do that, right?
Yeah. We're about twenty seconds delayed, so we'll have to wait a second. Forgot to turn on the no latency mode.
Sorry, John. I'm just trying to get the wording right on that motion. You move that the chairman signs the state aid for the project.
State aid agreement?
Great.
Yeah, we don't have any comments.
Okay. Well, we'll be working with Chris and, and, uh, Rob Wright and, um, probably their, you know, if, if they can get a program manager assigned to it, then we can kinda look and see where that, cause that program manager will either, will either be, I mean, they'll be one of those regardless of whether UDOT does it or we do it. So we can see where that goes.
So we just wrote, thank you. We'll be supportive, very supportive to make the project suc- successful.
All right, um. Annalisa?
Yes?
You'll need to make a copy of that and you can give a back to Mitch. Um, and we, oh, Becky's there. I'm sorry. I didn't see you over top of the screen.
The project manager is Cory Nelson. Is that how you said?
The attached part as well.
Must be a little bit delayed, but.
What'd he say?
Our PM is Cory Nelson.
Okay, good. So they've assigned one. Great. All right, um, yeah. So as we move through that process, we'll just have to shore up some money. Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, that's fine. You're testing my, my signatures while you're testing. What have I got?
Yeah, no, but.
Fourteen.
Okay, next item on the agenda, let's talk about Zach Zarbox, um, lot line combination. Uh, this is the second one of these that we have done in the South Eden Ranch subdivision. Um, since we have implemented our new, uh, lot line adjustment process. And, uh, seems to be going better. You know, there's always little things that we have to, um, um, clear up on application forms and stuff like that. I think it's, it's going fairly well. Uh, Zach actually applied back in, in June and, uh, unfortunately just kinda sat on my desk for three months and I feel stupid about that. That's why we're really trying to move this through is cause once we, once we got it moving, there was quite a bit of back and forth between the engineers. And it worked really favorably because we were able to have a public hearing last week, um, and get the planning commission's input. Um, and, uh, we also notified, noticed this as not only a lot line combination, but a, uh, utility easement abandonment. And we have to do that by law. Um, there was no one that showed up to the, the public hearing, um, in favor or opposed. Um, so the, with the recommendation of the county engineer, that all i's had been dotted and t's had been crossed. Um, he recommends approval of this. It meets the county's requirements. And so the county, uh, planning commission, uh, recommends approval of this lot line combination.
So planning and zoning is good?
Yes.
Everything's been passed and this is moving on for us for the final approval, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so this plot amendment is going to, uh, phase, in phase one of lots five and six, right?
Yep. Okay. I'll make a motion to accept this plot amendment, uh, for lots five and six, six in Eden Ranch subdivision, phase one.
Have a motion and a second. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Post and passes unanimously.
Great, thanks.
One last thing, cause, uh, Christopher Chestnut is a little bit behind. He says if the right away is within UDOT, right away, UDOT may wanna take the lead. That was the final comment.
Okay.
Well, we just assumed it, so.
You have more?
Yep, I got more.
Okay.
Last thing, uh, Economic Development Advisory Board met to review the applications that had been submitted, uh, for funding in the county. And I apologize, this is so small. Um, I didn't get copies of it before I, I left the office. Um, we had, uh, we had twenty applications. Um, and the, uh, the applications this year were good. Instead of getting about, you know, half a million dollars in funding requests, it was, you know, it was closer to the actual amount that, that we have as a county. Um, and what the board did is they, they changed up the rules just a skosh this year. And they, it said that anybody that's asking more than twenty thousand, uh, needs to come and give a presentation, uh, to the board on their, their asking amount. Um, so that took a little bit longer than, uh, that has in the past. And, uh, you can see, so what they did is, uh, they've got three that they just funded straight across. And they just gave them their full allocation. And that one was for, uh, Crawford Trough, one was for Sun Beaches, and one was for Quick and Tasty, I believe. Again, it's kinda small print. Um, but at the end of the day, they had a little bit of money left over. And so they just reallocated it, um, among some of the other, the other grant applications. Uh, one of the unique things that happened in, in this year is we had, um, an individual call on the day that we were supposed to meet as a, as a board. And they, they said, hey, um, you know, when, when does the board meet? When's the, a decision gonna be made? Because they tried to apply, they thought it had been successful, but it, for some reason, it never showed up on my list of, of applicants that came through. So I, I let them know, I can't make that decision. Um, you're gonna have to come to the board and, and, and see what they, they, they decide. And so the board allowed them to, um, you know, to present because they were both twenty thousand dollar asks. Um, so that was a little bit unique. Um, we did have, uh, a, a very significant discussion about conflict of interest. Um, and I had talked with Ben Lilby, um, you know, just before the meeting. And we'd gone over some, you know, key points to hit. Uh, we did have one, uh, one application, no, two applications that, uh, that did have that conflict of interest or potential conflict of interest. And so they both withdrew their applications and they were not, um, they were not funded.
I wonder if we need to, uh, look at offering those that want to, may put an application into changing the board out, replacing them so they can apply.
Sure.
I mean, that's, that's a lot of money for somebody to, that costs them a lot to be on our board.
Right, right. That, it, it's a sacrifice. Um, and that was even brought up as well, that the board, uh, term limits are one year. And I think that's why. So that business people can serve on the board for a year and then they can rotate off and then they can apply and not have to get slapped with the conflict of interest problem. So, uh, but I have yet to have anyone not wanna be on the board. So for that reason. But I think it was set up specifically for that so that we weren't, you know, excluding board members that they can, they can rotate off if they, uh, if they would like to apply in the next year.
So I'm, I'm just thinking we need to maybe offer it to the board to.
Okay.
And then we'll have to be looking right away to replace them.
Sure.
It's a good list. And I guess, I guess we'll wanna decide if this is something that we wanna keep doing year over year, or we wanna spend this money in a different way. Right now, I think it's, it's working.
You know, that's a discussion that the board has, uh, each and every year. You know, wondering if with the way that they're doing it is really benefiting the, uh, the economy of the county the best. And so there's this discussion, well, what if we took the two hundred thousand dollars and just put it towards something? And they feel like.
Focus on one thing.
Focus on one thing and they're, they're not completely solid that that, you know, two hundred thousand dollars in one particular location, they don't know if that would really benefit. One thing I can tell you is that when I call up the applicants to, uh, you know, to give them their award, even if they've been dogged, they gush with appreciation and gratitude for the opportunity to do this. Um, so in, in, in the long run, it may not really tip the scales on the economy for the county. But boy, the, um, the, the, uh, businesses are incredibly grateful to the county commissioners and the advisory board for allowing them this opportunity.
Okay. Any other questions we have about the list? If not, I guess I'd entertain, entertain a motion to go ahead and approve the list and, um, the awards to, uh, these particular applicants on the economic development, uh, under our economic development program.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we accept these, uh, awards that were presented by the Economic Development Board and Mitch for the, uh, development grants to these local businesses as pu- as presented here.
Second.
A motion and a second. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Now, let me ask you guys something. Is there something more? I mean, this, well, this is a new program. Is there something more that you would like me to bring back and present, um, to the board? Is the way that we're doing this.
So I, did you bring the applications? I asked you to bring them.
Yep, they're all right here. And I emailed them all to the board, um, about a month ago as well.
Um, no, but it would be cool to see maybe, you know, two, three follow-up stories.
Okay.
You know, success or what's, how it's helped.
So would you like me to, uh, schedule those for upcoming, uh, county commission meeting? Just randomly select some?
I think so. Once you guys like to see, just like ten or fifteen minutes of, you know, maybe how that money's helped them out.
Okay.
Cause it'd be, it'd be nice to have that for, for later if, if we need to go down to the state and, you know, present something.
I had one, uh, talk to me about a year ago's, not, none of this from this one, but prior. And they had put in for some equipment, skid steer, not a, for a business. And they ended up getting the grant they wanted, so they were awarded that. So instead of buying a half worn out used, when they went and bought a brand new one. And they were so grateful because they haven't had to spend time fixing and working on it because they've got a brand new one. It's just been wonderful. I thought that was pretty good, you know?
Yeah, they're, they definitely appreciate it.
Said he wouldn't have been able to buy a new one.
And there's something to that, right? When they're able to buy something a little bit newer, then they're not spending their time fixing it up. And it, it, sometimes newer is, uh, or by use seems like a good idea at the time, but, uh, the cost investment later really doesn't compensate.
And you're in it for the long haul too.
No, right, right. Kinda committed. Uh, one last thing. I have a letter of support, uh, from, that I drafted from Ridge County for the TPA grant that we requested. And if you would sign that, I'd appreciate it. It's not actually on the agenda, but we've already talked about it as, uh, as building forts, this kinda like technicality.
We need a motion to approve the, the letter.
What's the TPA? Sorry, one more time.
Technical Planning Assistance. It's a UDOT, it's a UDOT grant. It's the same funding source that we got for the general plan. And now we're just going after, um, additional funding to update the, uh, the county's, um, development.
Okay.
So basically subdivision and land use ordinances.
Well.
They're only thirty-five years old, so they're not that out of date. We could have another year or so.
Yeah, it's, for as far, uh, I'll make a motion that we have our chairman sign this, uh, previously, previously discussed letter about the TPA grant.
Motion and a second. On favor, say aye. Those opposed. Motion passes unanimously, so sign there.
Could you guys help with something? What's the best way to get ahold of the mayor of Randolph?
Cell phone.
Cell phone. You got one?
Yeah.
I'd like to include him on this, uh, like we did with the, uh, general plan. I just haven't been able to get ahold of him. I've emailed, uh, town of Randolph and I've gotten no response back.
Yeah, he's pretty good with, with texting through his cell phone.
Okay. Uh, and Woodruff has provided a, or, uh, Laketown has provided a letter of support. And so they'll pony up and help out with the match. And Woodruff, um, gave me good vibes that they would do the same. Just haven't heard back yet.
Yeah. He does work in some night shifts, so maybe shoot him a text first.
Okay. What's his name?
Sim.
Sim Bell?
Yeah.
All right. You sent that over?
Yep.
Awesome. Thanks so much, guys. Appreciate your help.
Thank you.
So you got a wedding in your future, huh?
Uh, well, wedding actually already happened. It's, the ceiling is coming up.
Oh. Okay, awesome.
Okay, Mitch, I, I guess I need you to explain. So what, did you include carryover in it?
Did not. So the carryover stays.
Okay, so keep rolling it. And where?
I'll send you a better spreadsheet, one that's readable, so that you can pull it up and then you can see the, uh, formulas behind calculations.
So it's got awarded and then it's new awarded?
Right, right. So what they did is they, um, they awarded this amount. There was some leftover and so they re, um, reallocated. So that would be new award.
Okay, so it doesn't come up to two hundred thousand, though?
No, but with that, that's minus this, the ten thousand from the regional commissioner. So with the regional commission's contribution, it is two hundred thousand.
Okay. I just wanna make sure we, Annalisa and I are on the same page with this when we.
You bet.
Do it, Mitch, in time. So then what happens to the six thousand seven hundred from last year that didn't get spent?
We just keep rolling it over.
Okay.
So on this building, or, yeah, this, uh, business license, is he calling in or is he supposed to come in?
We're gonna call him.
Okay.
Thanks, Commissioner.
You got a copy?
See you later.
You got a copy of the business license? No?
Do not.
We do not have a.
At least I talked to him yesterday on Isaacport.
We do not have a copy of the business license?
No.
Well, we're not gonna act on anything that we don't have a copy.
Just talk to him and see what.
Sorry, we're running a little bit behind.
You're good, I'm ready. I'm here for Sam, just so you guys know.
Okay.
This is Bob.
Yes, Mr. Henderson, this is Becky with, uh, Ridge County and the commissioners here on the speaker phone with the commissioners.
Oh, hello.
So, you, we have on the agenda that, uh, Mr. Hendrickson, that you're applying for a business license?
Uh, correct, yes.
Okay, um, we don't have an application in front of us, so explain what your business is.
So it'll be construction, um, and getting my, uh, B one hundred license. And so, you know, homes or small commercial. You know, whatever that client may need. And it's just, uh, right now I work for sturdy structures. And, uh, you know, building custom homes with them.
Okay, will you be out of the county or just in Garden City?
Uh, I plan on just in Garden City. This is, uh, kind of. I don't know how to say this right, a backup plan, you know, I just wanted to have something that I can go to, small jobs, whatever, and, uh. You know, I'm semi-retired. I retired, moved back here from, uh, Arizona. And built my home and, and, uh, and I just, I need to go back to work for a while.
Okay, the reason I ask that, if all your, if all your jobs are gonna be done right in Garden City, you would need a business license from Garden City.
Oh, so I, I actually went to them first, and they said because I live in the county that I needed a county.
Okay, well, so I was just gonna say, unless you're out in the county, then you would need a business license in the county, so. What we need you to do is get online and fill out an application. And, um, you, do you have a, are you a licensed contractor at the moment, or are you just going through that process?
Uh, I'm just going through the process. I used to have a Utah license for a while, it's gone now. I moved to, to Arizona and I worked with, uh, Ford, late construction for twenty years and then. I just kinda wanna get back into it on my own a little bit.
Okay, um, what we would require with that is, is a copy of your, uh, your, your certification. And also, uh, uh, some documentation to show that you're have, um, you're bonded for insurance reasons. To, uh, cover anyone that, um.
Sure.
You would, you know, be building for, so. If you would put that, that application together and along with your certification. Um, we can, we can move this process along for you.
Okay, um, so when you say certification, let me turn you, after the five K, I took the twenty-five hour and the five hour class.
Don't you have a certificate that says that you're a licensed contractor?
I have not, I have not committed my paperwork yet. I gathered everything up. I was just trying to get everything in place before I submitted to.
Okay. Um, you know, we can, we can go ahead and grant you a license as long as you'll bring that documentation. Or get a copy of that documentation to our clerk's office when you get it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Um, so when you're out on your own, once you get that certification, you're out on your own, you're actually, um, using your license. Then, you know, we would require you to have that in your insur- proof of insurance.
Yeah, and I contend you, I have my liability certificate already.
Okay.
And, uh, if you wanna have the waiver of, for, uh, workers' comp, cause I'm not gonna hire anybody, I'm just gonna. He wants help or use subcontractor.
Okay. And what's the name, what's the name of your company gonna be, Bob?
It's gonna be Blue Grounds Enterprises. And I already have my LLP in place, left some too.
Okay, um, the most important thing for us is that, uh, we're out there and you're doing licensed contract work. And not under, uh, not under anybody else's contract license, we. We just need to have that on file with your, with your business license application, so. Get that, get that to us as soon as you possibly can.
Okay, I can, uh, so, is there a way to email it, or do I, do I need to bring in comp?
Um, you can email it, um, and if you'll get on our county website. Um, you can email it to the same address that you email your, your, uh, business license application. We do have to have one of those on file as well.
Yeah, I have it filled out.
Okay, yeah, if, if you just wanna email it to that same, which is, uh, BPier at Ridge County Clerk. So, just find that application on our website, so.
Absolutely, okay, I can do that.
All right. So, we'll, uh.
I'll make a motion, uh, that we, uh, grant Bob Hendrickson a blue. Blue Grounds Enterprises, uh, business license, um, with the requisite that he sends in his, uh, bid, application and his certificate.
Have a motion and a second, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Hey, motion passes unanimously. So there is a fee to that as well, Bob, um. I believe it's, I believe it's fifty dollars, um, so.
Yeah.
Uh, that'll be, need to be paid and we'll give you a license, okay?
Okay, sounds good. I can get that paperwork you emailed out today.
Okay, that would be good. All right.
Thank you for your help.
Yep, good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, bye.
All right.
All right, so, uh, Winterfest, do you wanna come on up?
Yes.
So you're here for Sam?
Yes, Sam had another thing she had to be on, so I'm Amanda. Kirby.
Okay, we'll turn the time over to you.
Okay, do you guys have these? Also, I brought a couple of copies. Um, that's our. Route for the five K for Run Bear Lake. Um, we do have the sheriff lined up for safety that day of crossing the highway. Um, we start at the marina, cross the crosswalk, and then we have volunteers along the route. To help with traffic and warning signs and all that. Um, there's also third aid, first aid stations that'll be set up. Um, I know, like, our insurance is in there also, um, they go down behind Mike's Market in Garden City. About to the highway, turn around and come back, um, to the marina, and. They get their, there's the thing in there, their instructions are in there too, so they know, you know, be cautious and all that stuff, so. It's our fifth year doing it, um, it's always a good success. We've never had any problems or major issues with anybody, so.
Just the five K?
Just the five K, yeah. I believe all the fees and everything are already paid, everything's already set up.
So they, they hit the Logan Ten, that Logan Ten Road and turn around and go back?
Yeah, they don't go on to that highway, they turn around before that. It's called Paradise. Paradise Parkway.
Parkway.
Yeah, so they turn around there and come back the exact same way, so. And assuming it, it varies on snow removal, if the jogging path is open, they will use it. But I know years prior it hasn't been, so they have, that's why you have all the volunteers and the sheriff on board, so that if they're on the roadway.
What's, I, I don't have that, but what's the date on this?
Oh, I didn't think about that, January twenty second, it's like that third Saturday. Do you have a calendar?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, the twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth.
Yep, January twenty eighth.
Okay.
Yes, January.
And we're all gonna be jumping in for the monster, what's it called, polar plunge?
Polar plunge, yes, good deal. Last year it was crazy, there was a lot of people last year.
It gets bigger every year.
That was the first year I was part of it last year, cause I'd been, I, uh, managed Cody's, so we had the food truck down there, and yes, it's a good event.
Did you say the third Saturday or the fourth?
It must be the fourth, if he's got the twenty eighth. I know it's, uh, it's one of those last two weekends, and I can clarify that with Sam.
Yeah, on here it says the twenty eighth.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll, uh, I guess I'll make a motion that we accept this plan for the Winterfest jog. Um, approve that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the, uh, route for the Winterfest, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, okay?
Do we have to, or it's, they don't leave Garden City?
Well, they're in the county when they're by the marina. They start and stop in the county.
It's part of it, the marina's in the county. All right, Amanda, I think you're good to go.
Okay, thank you guys.
Thanks, sorry to have you wait.
No worries at all.
Okay. Okay, looks like our next item is our bathroom renovation and our proposal for funding for that.
So you guys had me take the lead on this, we put, um. One of the areas we identified early on that needed to be renovated in the courthouse was, uh, the bathrooms, we wanted to turn them touchless. Um, we did put this out for a bid and, and nobody responded, so then we went and. Looked for bids and the only one that actually would come and, and give us a bid is G and G team. I had them include the kitchen downstairs, mostly because of. Uh, the budget and it's, it's an area that just needs to be redone, especially if we're gonna be growing, but it's not. I also had them break it out, so we don't need to accept that. Uh, the, the bid for the bathroom is sixty-two thousand five hundred. It's more expensive because it is gonna require them to move. Some plumbing around to pull that. Uh, urinal off the wall and to add some ventilation, but, um, I think it'll look really nice, so. That's kind of all I have to present on it.
So, wh- what are we moving around exactly? Tell me what we're doing.
So, I asked them if we could move the sink and the urinal. You know how you open the door and you're kinda making eye contact with people? Um, and then I s- I asked if, you know, how expensive would it be to add some type of ventilation or fan in there? And, and they, they had the idea of, of doing a drop-down ceiling and then putting a fan in the wall. You know, that's, will suck some of that, cause it can get a little bit, uh, stinky in that bathroom sometimes, but. And then everything would be touchless, uh. They were gonna go tile halfway up the walls, there's a one spot where you can tell where people wash their hands and then turn. And the water drips and it's sort of eaten away at the wall there. I don't know if this is a, is a good bid, but they're, this, the only, they're the only ones that have responded after. Fifteen months of trying, similar to our bar path, I guess.
So the total for everything is, what did you say?
The total for, including the kitchen downstairs is ninety-five thousand nine hundred.
Okay. Um, what about just the bathroom?
Just the bathroom is sixty-two thousand five hundred.
That's putting locks on it.
Yeah, that's everything, yep. I'm not extremely, um, worried about the kitchen downstairs, I just, cause we don't use it so much right now. But if we continue, or if we take prisoners in the future, things like that, it'd be nice.
I'm not sure that, I, I guess we need all new cabinets and. I mean, I, I guess I'm not sure why we need to do a total remodel down there.
I just haven't re- I just haven't got it and do everything, um, as we were opening, there's some cabinets that. You can tell it was pieced together, and I spent a lot of time down in there when my dad worked there, but some doors don't open. Uh, I know the oven doesn't work. Um, there are a few leaks and, so I, I didn't, have them give me a bid of, of fixing the stuff.
So, this is a, this is just tear it all out and start completely over then, is that, is that what they're talking about?
Yeah, for the kitchen. Well, I guess probably the bathrooms as well. And where we were planning on doing it this year, I figured this can be the project for twenty twenty-three, and then we do something else in twenty twenty-four. If we decide to do that.
Well, I, I think, I think my thoughts are, are, you know, as far as remodeling the bathroom, that's a priority. Um, has something we've discussed for a couple of years. And we might, but probably oughta move forward on, on maybe doing that and then, and then have a, a look at the kitchen. And see if we could get any other bids on the kitchen between now and.
Yeah, and I'm totally fine with that, that's why, uh, I had them break them up. I, this is so hard to get someone here that I asked them to do two at once.
I, I, that's, and that's fine, I, I get that, so.
So if you guys are okay with sixty-two, five, and, and having commenced that project, then I, I'll make a motion.
How soon could they get started on that?
I think beginning of next year, you know, a couple, maybe a month.
Good. Um, yeah, so, if you wanna, wanna entertain a motion to get started or do the bathroom remodel. It'd be really, well, I was gonna say it'd be, I don't know that there's any, I'm busy time for us.
Yeah.
I was gonna say it'd be really good if they get started on it, January, February, March, maybe there'd be less traffic, but I don't know if that's the case or not, so.
Yeah.
That's gonna be the hard part is, where do the, where do the ladies go when they're under construction?
Well, that's gonna be a problem. They'll have to do one at a time, and they'll probably have to put a lock on the door and.
Yeah, if it were summertime, we could bring in, you know, an outhouse or something, but.
Luckily, we don't have a man. Right now employee because, like, we have Dallin and.
Yeah.
But if they'd put a lock on one of the doors.
Yeah.
First thing.
And, and I'll take charge, I'll work with them to make sure that it's smooth.
To do both at the same time.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll work with them to make sure that kind of stuff is thought about.
Okay.
Um, if you're okay with it, then I'll make a motion that we accept the bid for the bathrooms at sixty-two thousand five hundred, uh, from G and G.
Second.
Motion and a second, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, okay, we'll go ahead and award that bid. And, uh, and as that moves along, let's see how things go with that and. We can see.
When it's done, let's.
We'll, we can look at the kitchen this year.
And we'll need to come up with a plan, a long-term plan of the building.
I guess one of the things about the kitchen thing that, um, I'm wondering about is that the, is that the biggest priority for them?
Yeah, no, probably not. Got a few smaller items that we need to take care of.
We were having troubles with toilets in the cells, weren't they, some?
There's some mold in the showers. Have you guys been in that shower?
No.
Yeah, it's not great. Yeah, it's not great, but.
I don't even know where it is.
Just right as you enter.
Just as you go in and, just as inside of the jail.
Just need some TLC, there's some rust and stuff. I know they're already putting cameras in the cells, aren't we?
Yes, yes, yeah.
But as far as like the long-term plan of, is, you know, how long are we gonna have this building, or are we gonna just renovate it, or have we gotten to do anything? Thank you.
Alright, anything else before we break for lunch?
You'll do the minutes?
Sure.
If you have chance to review.
They let them over and look good to me.
So, we approved the minutes in our last meeting, right?
Not for the budget work.
So, this is what was included?
Yeah, November twenty-first, they haven't been.
Right, but.
But then November second, we didn't, we haven't done those either.
Well, that's what I was asking. So, um.
So you should have had both sets, right?
Alright.
I'd make a motion that we accept the minutes for November second, commission meeting and, uh, November, what was it?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-first working budget meeting.
Second.
Okay, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, minutes will stand as approved. Okay, our next item will be a business, we'll be, uh, we'll convene back at one fifteen apparently.
I didn't know if we needed time to work on the budget.
Okay, I hope not.
Hope not either.
Okay, so we'll convene back at one fifteen, um, we have one item of business and then at one thirty, we'll have our budget hearing. So with that, I'll adjourn our commission meeting for lunch.
Reappoint Ben Willoughby as our Rich County Attorney for the next term of office for four years.
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second it along with the opinion that I think he's done us a good job. So I'm glad he did and second that motion.
I, I agree. He's been, he's been very proactive in helping us with a lot of different things, contracts and, um, and our ordinances and policies and has been very active in helping us with many issues that have arose and, and, uh, I, so with that, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Okay, Ben will be appointed then for the next term of four years, so, um, that is, that is done. He will be sworn in on maybe next commission meeting. I'm not really sure when we'll, probably next commission meeting. So, um, he's officially back as our county attorney at the beginning of the year. All right.
Are you coming in from this room?
Yeah, oh, okay. I don't think they've started the action. Have you?
No.
Okay. Want coffee? Get it for here?
Uh, one.
You're leaving already?
Yeah, I need to get a coffee.
Adios. Okay, it is, uh, one thirty and, um, we've advertised for a public hearing, um, to, uh, to discuss the budget for the public, to ask any questions or give any comments for the budget. I believe it's something made available for all those who are present. Um, and, uh, so we'll open the public hearing for any comments for questions from the public.
Got any online?
Um, there's some people watching, but nobody said anything yet.
Did insurance change though?
Yeah, it did. Um, the changes we made to the insurance is the deductible went down from fifteen hundred to a thousand dollars. However, um, the overall premium went up like point one, two percent or something like that.
We had a couple options. Uh, we had a plan that was similar, that would cost the county the same, but the deduct- deductible went up to two thousand. And we opted to spend a little bit more money, um, to, to decrease the deductible. Cause overall, I think that we agreed as a commission that that helps, um, people more than lower deductible, so.
So is it the same life company?
Yeah, it's Select Out. It's the same, same insurance, uh, but instead of costing the county the same, it increased three point seven percent.
That was, that was including the three point seven percent. We, um, included a point six in medical. And, um, uh, nothing in vision, um, but the three point seven was in dental and medical went up point six percent. And that, um, like what was mentioned, but from John, um, your deductible is now at a thousand versus fifteen hundred.
Uh, the out-of-pocket maximum went up. That's just how it is everywhere. But like the RX deductible is still zero. Um, and overall, it's just, it's similar. It's gonna cost maybe a few bucks more to each employee, but.
I will say, um, as we work through the budget process and work through this year's, uh, expenditures, um, I wanna commend the department heads for being, um, staying within your budgets and being, uh, frugal within your budgets and, um, coming in under budget, so that gives us a little, uh, more cushion to be able to do some more, we hope to, um, do some modest increases in wages by being able to come in on the budget. That gives us more, more availability to be able to do that, so. There is an incentive to managing our offices and making sure you're doing things right and, and the best you can, but also in keeping your, within your budget, so. And everybody, I think, we're, we're done really well. I don't know that we have a department that's, that's over, um, their total budget. But a great example is sanitation. Their fuel budget was eighty thousand and we've spent a hundred and twenty-five so far. Um, road department is over just a little as well, um, about two or three thousand, but it's all fuel. It's just those increases, we just don't have any, any control over, and so we've made some adjustments with that.
So could I ask what you did for wages for the upcoming?
Um, so we've proposed a two dollar an hour increase across the board. And that will begin the first of January.
We're still playing catch-up, uh, and we think this will get us up just about there as far as the lowest paid employees. Getting them to that minimum threshold to, to where this really is a job that they could live off of or support a family. Um, and then we'd like to go back to eventually just the cost of living adjustments. Cause that does reward people who have put more time into the county, you know? That's what we wanna do, but we need to catch up.
Now, does that, how does that work when we have, for example, I just hired a part-time in my office, uh, she'll start this, um, this next pay period?
Okay, so your part-time will be higher to the way she is. After six months, she will get a fifty percent or a fifty cent an hour, an hour increase. So at the end of the year, she will be, she will be making fifty cents an hour and then she would be eligible for any increases going into the next year.
So she's not included on the two dollar piece?
Okay, that's what I was just trying to figure out, so I just need to know that.
Yeah.
But the fifty cent after the six month probation period still kicks in?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate all your work on that on cap wages. That's been helpful trying to get someone hired.
So you've got somebody now?
They, they haven't started yet, but yes, I just hired this week. Where'd you hire her? I had to look at it and, um, education wise, she had more education. And, um, as far as the fit within my office, I think will fit well within what, what were required and what we need.
So in the past two years, we are now at a five dollar increase, which for full-time people, that's over ten thousand dollars.
That's very important, we should appreciate it.
But it's been because like Bill said, he's exactly right. You guys have done so well of managing your money that we do have that excess that we can commit to an ongoing, you know, cause wage increases are something you pay for forever.
Yeah.
But you guys have done really well at managing your money.
I feel very comfortable with, that we're very competitive now, um, with the school and other areas, so I, I appreciate that. Said we were struggling to get anybody to even apply, um, at the eleven fifteen hour, so.
Yeah.
I know that's hard and I know it's a, a commitment that's long-term, so I should appreciate it.
We can, you know, if we can continue to see our revenues being really stable and, and a little more new growth from year to year, you know, we'll be able to make some adjustments on a yearly basis and hopefully, you know, we're, we're kind of a, at a bare minimum right now and we hope to be able to put more in, into wages in the next probably twenty-four months to try to make us even more competitive for, um, you know, more qualified people, I guess, so to speak. Uh, make it more attractive for people to apply, so, um, that's our overall, uh, goal, so.
Can I ask what we have in, in mind for the building? Like, are we still working on the bathrooms or what?
So.
Do we have an idea of what?
We just, we just approved a contract today, um, for the remodel of the bathrooms and, um.
Make them all tutsless.
That was just approved a couple hours ago.
Yeah, so.
The bid was pretty substantial, sixty, sixty-two thousand dollars to just do these two bathrooms.
Very expensive.
So that's, that's, that's our priority for right now and, and we'll be looking at other projects. Maybe, uh, maybe through this year or maybe it'll start next year, but, um, that's the one that we, we felt like there was a biggest need for and have been talking about for a couple of years, so, um, but we just approved that. We just awarded that contract to, uh, to, to a company and they'll start hopefully after the first of the year. We don't know. One of the questions about that is we'll have to figure out how to work around, um, having one out of commission while they're working on it versus, we just figured we just put a porta potty just out in the hall right there and just, just put women on line on it and it would be good.
There you go. Yeah, that'll go over.
I, I don't know. That's gonna be just a little bit of a challenge, you know? It'd be easier if we had bathrooms other places, we could send people, but we don't, so. We'll have to figure that out.
Unless we run to the station or?
Well, you know, I mean, when, when you got court day, for example, and you got all these people coming in or, or, you know, whatever it is, whatever function we may have, it creates a, a real issue if only we only got one bathroom, but.
And it's cold outside.
We're all gonna see if we can't just, just do one at a time.
Yeah.
We'll have to work around that. Anyway, that's, that's the plan right now. Um, we put enough money in there for another project if we can figure out, um, we really would like to put LED lights throughout the whole, um, courthouse, so we get a railroof to the number one humming if.
The, the lantern.
Yeah, um, and they would be, you know, more energy efficient, so we've got some, we actually got a quote from, uh, Utah Power on that and so we'll be looking at that. That's, that's probably something we may pursue, um, as well as the bathroom. We'll just have to kinda see where we're at with that, so.
As far as the lang- long-term plan of the actual building, I, I just, as a community and a commission, we still need to decide, you know, how long are we gonna be in this building? Do we wanna renovate the current building or do something else? And we, we have, we don't have any answers at the moment. Um, cause eventually we're gonna have to choose to, to either do something new with this building, you know, and expand it or start from scratch and we haven't got very far in that discussion.
We're not brave enough to bail off and do a fifty million dollar building right now, I don't think.
You don't think that'd go over very well?
Well.
Only the school gets away with that kinda stuff.
Pretty big commitment.
I will say, I, I did the apportionment this month and they got seventy-four percent of the apportionment. And I don't know if there's anything we can stress with the state to not allow them to keep taking more and more. And I don't know if there's anything we can stress with the state to not allow them to keep taking more and more. I don't know what you do, but.
There, it's all up to the, well. Totally each county controls their own thing.
Yeah.
Your own destiny. All right, if we have no more comments, no nothing?
Yeah, I was just waiting for my chance.
Okay, I just.
Honestly, on behalf of, uh, Fair Lake C V D, we really thank you guys for all you did.
Fair Lake C V D, what is that?
C V D, Fair Lake Convention and.
Thank you for spelling that out. For those that are online that may not know what the C V D B is.
I could come up with other names too. No, but it's. I had a ball. You know, you've got those sweetie things, you know, the ball comes out of the mouth? Anyway, but really.
Picture was on it?
Yeah, I did.
Your, your budget, we just kept how you presented it, cause we figured you knew best, so.
Actually, we didn't.
Actually, we did not.
We ma- we ma- We, we actually made a couple of changes to your budget and I can get with you afterwards. It was just some line item changes. Um, that we, we actually discussed it with you, um, last week and we just added, added that in, so. That was, well, what we included was the, the room tracker basically for, for nightly rentals, nightly rental program. Yeah, so we just kinda needed to decide whether we're gonna renew, renew that contract or go with a different contractor. But we put enough in there we, we thought would, um, cover at least the contract that we presently have. Maybe in, and an increase if we get more information from another contractor, so. So that was, that was, yeah, that was the change we made to your budget. And as far as you, oh, you three's budget, I don't think we made any changes. We just plugged in what budgets you presented with us. There will be some changes in your wages and benefits, um, just simply because of the increase that we're, we proposed. So your budgets will go up a little bit, but that's the reason why.
Bill?
Yes.
Does, so, sorry, Reagan's at the soil conservation.
Yeah.
We need help. But so does that apply to extension too for the, that half and half salaries?
What do you mean?
Well, cause with extension where, where both, where two of the salaries are half here, half at the university, does, do the wage increases impact those?
Yeah, they'll, they'll, the, the half that we pay will be, yeah.
Okay.
You notice your, but your budget did go up, just as Reagan presented it, so. And it seems like your office is doing really good with Reagan there. Everybody's vibing.
I've got a question that might not pertain to it right now, but in twenty twenty-four, I didn't ask to do the treasures conference. So not this summer, but next summer. And so I don't know what I need to do. First, I gotta find rooms for everybody. What do I do as far as like how much money the county helps me with it? Or do I put that in my budget next year or, or?
Um, why?
Try and get as many sponsors as we can.
I was just gonna say, what would the county have to put into it?
Well, to maybe if we do like a cookout where, you know, we have somebody locally help just do a cookout.
Don't you, don't you have a registration fee to your conference?
We do, and we try and get enough to pay for everything. But some counties have them like put in for the gift and give them or, you know, like you give everybody at the conference a little swag bag. Not a lot of stuff in it, but a few things in it. I didn't know if that's something that they usually take out of the county or?
Usually if they give a swag bag, they usually have sponsors to do that, to do that. I mean, we can talk about that. You're a year off from that. But, um, usually, you know, you cover everything in your registration fee. It's so that, you know, it's not on the county's dime. I mean, but, you know, we could certainly talk about that. But you better have, as we discuss that, a year from now and going into next year's budget, you better have a list of things that, uh, you know, have, uh, you know, some estimates of what you're gonna need. I mean, but yeah, it will have to come out of your budget.
My big concern is just the rooms. You know, hopefully I can convince somebody to give us a really good rate because I know it's a resort, so we pay more than you do if you go, you know.
And you're gonna, usually you're, it's in the summer, isn't it?
What time of year is it?
June twenty-four.
Yeah, you're gonna be competing with the whole world.
I, I know some of them said to try and do it around the, is it second or third? Second week in June, cause there's usually, is it a marathon or something the third week? I don't know. I'll have to go back and remember, but that's my big concern is getting the rooms.
Well, I know that the last time we did a treasures workshop, um, they did it at, at Blue Water Beach and there was enough rooms there and I don't remember. All I know is they used their, their convention center there at Blue Water and that's where they had their treasures workshop when they did it.
I know, Ruth, that.
A long time ago.
Years before I got.
Yeah.
Yeah.
When I did the assessive workshop, I did it at Harvard Village. They use their convention center.
Yeah.
Stuff there.
Yeah.
I'm trying to do one where they have access to the beach, you know, fairly easy. Just because they usually bring their whole family in.
When I did it, I partnered with Cash and we stayed.
Cause they stayed in Logan, didn't they?
We stayed in Logan, yeah. Cause there wasn't room, I mean.
Just any suggestions, cause I'm very.
It's a hard, it's a hard time of the year, you know, I mean, but if you're thinking about doing it, you need to reserve now.
That's what I plan on the next few weeks, go to Garden City and.
I'd go talk to, out, out at, uh, Mark Smoot's convention center over there and have a, a visit with them and see what kind of a package deal they would be willing to do.
Yeah. Well, I have talked to a little bit at Legacy Beach, cause they have the big building and then those across the road. So if you had, you know, a family come with four or five kids, they could go in one of those easier, but.
And that one's nicer because they do have immediate access.
Yeah, they have access to the beach. Plus they have the big area inside the building. You could have all your things and stuff too.
Yeah, they have money.
I may be accessing your.
I was gonna tell you afterwards, I could send it off.
We want them to have a good time. Uh, we, we want to put a good foot forward, so anything you do.
They're very excited. I mean, they're like, hey, we gotta go to Garden City to the lake, so, yeah.
All right.
Mike could get it though this far ahead. Over a year. If it was this coming, you probably wouldn't.
No, but they told me if you'll talk to us around January twenty-three, we can set it up for June of twenty-four.
Yeah.
Okay, work on that and see what you need to put in your budget if you're gonna need a little bit. Let us know. Any other questions? None? All right, with that, I will make a, I will close the public hearing and we will convene back to our December fourteenth regular commission meeting. And, um, we probably have some items on the budget that we need to deal with. One of those, we, we need to have a motion to open the budget and make some line item changes within budgets.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we open the twenty twenty-two budget and make the following amendments. The emergency management grant, we need to, a revenue of fifty-seven thousand, five hundred thirty-two and expense of fifty-seven thousand, five hundred thirty-two. The economic development grant with a revenue and expense of two thousand, two hundred thousand dollars. The local assistance and tribal consistency fund with a revenue of a hundred seventy-seven thousand and twenty-seven dollars. And the Woodruff Creek watershed revenue of a hundred and fourteen thousand and expense of a hundred and fourteen thousand.
Okay, we need to make a, an adjustment to our budget, um, for those final revenue and expense items. So we need a second on that.
Second.
Motion in a second. Oh, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, voting is unanimous and the clerk will have the authority to go ahead and make those adjustments. Um, so let's deal with the tax rates.
I make a motion that we adopt the two thousand twenty-two tax rates. General operations at zero point zero 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 six two seven. Multi-county assessing and collecting zero point zero 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 one five. And local assessing and collecting at zero point zero 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 two six five six.
Okay.
I second that.
I have a motion in a second to set the, uh, multi-county, uh, tax rate as well as local, local assessing and collecting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. All right, let's deal with our medical insurance and cost of living.
Okay, I'll make an, uh, a motion that we, uh, go with Hoffman Insurance after bidding it out with multiple people. Medical insurance will increase one point three seven percent. Dental insurance will increase three point seven. Life insurance and vision insurance will remain the same. Uh, that's my motion.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion in a second for the medical, dental and the life insurance. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. All right, um. We're ready to move on for our general fund budget approval.
I make a motion that the two thousand twenty-three general fund budget be in the, this year will be in the amount of eleven million, seven hundred and forty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars. For revenue and expenditures. Sanitation budget will be one million, two hundred and forty-five thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars for revenue and expenditures.
Second that motion.
I have a motion in a second for the twenty twenty-three general fund budget of eleven million, seven hundred and forty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we also have a motion to approve the sanitation budget for one million, two hundred and forty-five thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, let's deal with our compensation.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we do a wage increase, cost of living of two dollars per hour will be given to part-time, full-time county employees with the possibility of a market adjustment based on salary reviews.
Second.
I have a motion in a second for a cost of living adjustment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. A motion passes unanimously. All right, we need to deal with our retirement rates.
I make a motion, Rich County pay a hundred percent of the Utah retirement rates.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to pay, for the county to pay a hundred percent of the retirement rates. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Um, we need to, uh, we, we need to act on, um, the county sanitation services. So we need a motion to pay for those.
Okay, I'll make a motion that Rich County is billed for the county sanitation services.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, we have a quarter cent sales tax that we need to reauthorize every year. That's a quarter cent option sales tax, and so we need to reauthorize that for the year of twenty twenty-three.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to reauth- authorize the quarter cent option sales tax. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Um, I, we need a motion to adopt, um, this budget as of today.
So move.
Second.
Okay, our budget will be adopted as December seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, and then one last motion that we need to give the clerk, um, the authority to do would be, um, with the, dealing with the budgets, so.
I make a motion that we authorize our clerk to make department item line adjustments.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to authorize the clerk for line item adjustments to balance the budgets. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. All right, motion passes unanimously. Um, that concludes the business, I believe. Other than we need to approve the expenditures for, um, the month of November.
I'll make a motion, we approve the month of November expenditures.
Second.
Okay, motion to approve the expenditures been reviewed by the commission. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Uh, I believe that concludes our business, um, for our December fourteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting. And if there's any other business clerk that we need to deal with, do you know? Might wanna recognize that this will be our clerk's last official commission meeting. As, as an official county clerk, how many years county ma- ma- clerk?
Uh, this is my fourth term, but.
How many years have you been in the courthouse? What did you say? Since nineteen twenty-one?
November of seventy-eight.
Seventy-eight. I was still.
My last court yesterday.
Seventy-eight? I was still in grade school.
Oh, you were not.
He was out of high school, but barely.
Well, I just, I'm gonna take the prerogative as a chair and just wanna tell you, thank you for your diligence and your professionalism and, and working and so hard for the, for the residents of our county and taking care of the commission and, and our, our duties as a, an executive assistant to us and the things that you've done outside and above and beyond the many hours that you've put in outside of your regular workday and the hours that you worried over many, many things that, uh, just because you are so dedicated to your job. And I just wanna tell you, thank you for that and for the opportunity to work with you, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
And I appreciate you guys. When we go to some of those meetings and they say they don't like their commissioners or the commissioners don't support them, I always said, our commissioners support me, so I thank you for that.
Okay, with that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move, second.
Meeting adjourned.